Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and it will be led by Mrs. Linda Clark and Mrs. Roseanne Barton and also for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank all that are in attendance. Also at this time we'll ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening. Yes, first I would like to acknowledge Ms. Roseanne Barton and also Dr. Clark and also Robin Newell who's in the audience. We are having Teacher Appreciation Week, May the 6th through the 10th, and National Teacher Day is May the 7th. And really our principals and our schools are elite teachers, they are instructional leaders, so thank you very much for what you do. And we'll be honoring our teachers, but I also want to thank you for your leadership there, so thank you ladies. And you may take that message back to your gentlemen friends and others tomorrow morning when we meet, by the way. Well, Ms. Mark, thank you very much, I'm sure you'll tell them that tomorrow. I'd like to ask for Doris Coffey if she would please come to the microphone and also Carissa Brooks at this time. The reason I'm asking for that is because Doris just returned today from San Antonio where she was honored, she has received the International Reading Association Weekly Reader Eleanor M. Johnson Award. And the reason that she received that award is because she is an outstanding elementary classroom teacher of reading language arts. So Doris, congratulations, and I'd like for you just to talk a minute please, first Carissa, about why you think Doris received this award.
Doris was the perfect choice for this award. When you go into our classroom, what you'll see is small group instruction, really working where kids are, really loving the kids, a great climate. She uses poetry to teach kids how to read and really it's just a fun environment where kids are actually learning.
And Doris, would you take just a second, you're at Hobgood, would you talk a little bit about the importance of your job and why you do what you do?
Well, I'm really glad to have landed at Hobgood because I feel like I can make a great difference for the kids there. My heart has always been throughout my career to be able to help the hardest-to-learn students to read, and I've had an opportunity to do that there and the support I've felt from the school board and the administration in this district has really helped me do my job.
Well, I want to congratulate you and I'm sure the board wants to congratulate you too, but this is quite a special honor and we are delighted that you're here because we know that you could be anywhere. And thank you for choosing to serve the children of Murfreesboro. Board, would you please join me? Thank you so much. Our retiring employees will be honored at a dinner with the school board on Thursday, May the 16th at 6:00 PM at Doubletree by Hilton. And we had our schools, we had 100% participation in the jump rope for heart, actually the jump rope and hoops for heart. And each school has received a banner and special thanks from the American Heart Association and we appreciate the work of our coordinated school health people, Mary Lee Smith and also Kimberly Campbell. And every school in the district has been awarded the FIT Friendly Status and has received a plaque in recognition of the schools creating physical activity programs for their employees. And I have to tell you, I received an email from the person who coordinates this with the American Heart Association and they were delighted that our schools did so well, so I thank our schools, our principals, our teachers and our children for participating in that, and that's quite remarkable. Congratulations to Mitchell Nelson Primary Media Specialist Shannon Minner. She has been invited to participate as a fellow in the Middle Tennessee Writing Project, the summer institute that they have this summer, and so we are delighted that she has been selected for that. And then thanks to MTSU students, the Department of Human Sciences, the Child Development and Family Studies, who under the direction of Department Chairperson Deborah Belcher and also Dr. Beth Emery donated $750 for a backpack food program through their fundraising project. And the project is War on Hunger, World Food Program, Universities Fighting World Hunger. And this is the, I believe, the second, perhaps the third year that they have done this for our children, but we really appreciate again the support of MTSU and in this particular instance, the Department of Human Sciences, Child Development and Family Studies for their partnership with us. And those are your communication items.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Consent items, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second on consent items, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Dr. Gilbert, action items?
Yes, I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Baker.
Good evening, our first policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy BO47, naming a school. This is a new policy and it is setting out basically the procedures that have been used in the past when we have named a school facility. Under this policy, the Board Chair and the Director of Schools shall jointly appoint a committee composed of a school board member, a city council member, a community representative and staff members, with the director serving as an ex officio member. And the committee shall not be no smaller than five members but no larger than nine. And community input would be sought. Names for consideration by the committee may be submitted by any resident of the city of Murfreesboro, any board member, any city council member or school personnel. And proposed names should be sent to the director of schools by email or regular mail or fax. The committee will review and consider all proposed names submitted by the community. Then the school naming committee shall present a list of not less than two names but no more than four names to the board for their consideration. And the board will make a final selection of the name and present such name to the city council for their information. Some guidelines are set forth in the policy regarding the name selection. It states that schools shall not be named for living persons except for those who have rendered exemplary service to public education in Murfreesboro as recognized and attested by a vote of the board. Two schools in the system shall not be given the same name and care should be taken to avoid similar names. Schools may be named for the area or community in which the school is located, or the street on which the school is located, or a street bordering the school site. It may be named for presidents, governors, or recognized national, state and local leaders who have made an outstanding contribution to the field of education. And the committee will submit its recommendation about the name of the school with supporting reasons to the board. There is also a section that deals with naming additional buildings. Facilities other than a school should be given names which describe the facility or geographic location in the city. And a single building on a campus with multiple buildings or a specific area on the campus may be named for a living person provided such person has made an outstanding contribution to that school. And the naming of such building or specific areas shall not supplant the facility's name. If in the judgment of the board, an existing facility should be renamed, the criteria set forth in this policy would apply. And the director shall have authority to recommend the naming of a portion of a facility, such as a section of a building or a single building on a campus, directly to the board for approval without going through the committee process.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker on this particular policy? Mrs. Rainier?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment that I really like the section with the community input. I think it's really important that residents feel that they can be a part of this process and I think that it's commendable that we're allowing that to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Rainier. Are there any other comments or questions? Oh, sorry, Ms. Smith?
This is just a semantics, I guess, would be on the naming of additional buildings, we are allowing the facility to be named for a living person, but have we put a line in there for any other people, the deceased persons in that particular clause?
That's just-
I saw it in the part above, obviously, but I don't know that it was sawed in.
Well, the part above would also apply here, it's just specifically saying that there's a little bit more leeway for naming it after a living person if it's just a portion of a building or one particular building on a campus.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Phillips?
I, this is a great policy, the only thing that is a little bit concerning to me is this section where it says, "Schools shall not be named for living persons except for those who have rendered exemplary service to the public education in Murfreesboro as recognized and attested by a vote of the board." You know, I just really feel like that could put the board in the unenviable position of embarrassing a family. If a family member's name was presented, someone who's, you know, contributed a lot to the community and there should be a certain board person who was opposed or ugly for some reason to that family, I just really feel like that could put a family in an embarrassing situation. And I would, you know, I would never want that to happen. I don't know if there's any other way to do that because I'm sure that no name would be brought to the board unless the person had contributed a lot, but one never knows what can happen on boards.
Ms. Smith?
The way I read it, though of course I don't think that we would choose to name a school for someone who wasn't exemplary, is that it has to come to a vote anyway. They're coming, whether it is named for a person who is alive or deceased, it has to come to the board anyway. So we have to, we have to have that public discussion unfortunately, unfortunately, but it, do you see what I mean, Ms. Phillips?
I understand what you're saying. I still think that, you know, I've been on the board a long time and we've never had a policy regarding the naming of a facility before and we've all, you know, done pretty well with the naming of our facilities. And I just want to make sure that if we are taking on a new policy regarding the naming of a facility, we do not put what you and I might think is an exemplary person, someone else on the board might not think so. And, you know, that's, I just don't want to put anyone in a hurtful position.
Correct.
All about naming a building, it's just, you know, it's just not something, in the past we've simply discussed these things as a board at retreats and taken the recommendation of the committee. It's just a thought, something to think about, I don't know if there's any other way, Ms. Baker, to-
Well, regardless, as Ms. Smith said, it will come to a vote of the board as to which name to choose. If the board would prefer that the section as recognized and attested by a vote of the board be deleted, if that makes you more comfortable, that could be done, but the bottom line is it would still have to be brought to the board for a vote if you decide to name it after a living person, well, any person, person living or deceased, it still comes to a vote before the board.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Barrett?
Ms. Baker, any of this, whether it's for a school or a portion of a school, do all of these recommendations go to this committee that is appointed?
Just the naming of a national school goes to the, to the committee. The director can, can make a recommendation of naming a portion of a building or one, one building on a broader campus, say if we had a standalone gym or something of that nature. She could make that directly to the board without going through the committee process. There is that exception, but this is really focused on using the committee for naming of an entire school campus.
Ms. Barrett?
Ms. Baker, answer my question about just striking that section as recognized and attested by a vote of the board, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Dr. Brown?
One way that you might change the wording is attested, basically, I think some people could interpret that as we're going to discuss and possibly decide whether someone has exhibited exemplary contributions to education. You could change attested to approved and that takes out that connotation because we're going to have to approve the name anyway and that changes the connotation slightly.
Ms. Okay, Ms. Baker, you have that. Okay, board members?
Yes, fine.
Any other questions or comments on this policy? If there are none, we'll ask for a motion.
So moved, approved?
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Wait a minute.
I had a question, is your motion including Dr. Brown's suggested revision?
Yes, ma'am.
And your second agrees with that?
Yes.
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Okay, in the next policy that you have on your agenda, I will bring that policy to you at the next board meeting. As we discussed at the policy session, I was awaiting more information and I have not received that yet in order to make those revisions.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. We're ready to proceed.
The next item is approval of the fiscal year 14 general purpose cafeteria and ESP budgets. And I want to thank the board, the board has had several meetings to look at the budget and to review the budget, we have taken it line by line, which is what I think a board should do, I think it's very important that what is in the budget is transparent to the board and also transparent to the public. So I appreciate very much the way that the board has approached this budget and asked why and the what and, and made some changes. I'm just going to briefly review some of the highlights and then turn this over to Mr. Anderson. But you do have the budget before you, as far as changes in the budget, this year we are maintaining our people teacher ratios, we think that is extremely important and the board has, this particular board has absolutely supported that, so it's very much appreciated. So the pupil teacher ratios are going to be calculated at an average of 20 to 1 for K3 and 22.5 to 1 for 4-6, being aware that you have adjustments in there, but certainly that, keeping that average. We have added 2.4 art teachers, a third of a band teacher, 1.5 physical education teachers and 1 and 1/2 ESL teachers for student growth. Again, as with any budget, we have put, and with everything in the budget, we have put the numbers there and we expect these things, of course we can't guarantee that we're going to need them, but that's what we're projecting. No new textbook adoption this year, you'll remember that we did adopt the reading textbook series early, so we do not have a new adoption, so the funds that are there on that particular line are for growth that we expect from our students and also for replacement books. We are looking at software and so there is funding in there for software. We are moving toward the park assessment and it's important for our children to be ready for that assessment, but more importantly for our children to be ready for jobs that they will need and so the technology literacy is really important. So you will have software here that has to do with both keyboarding but also with reading software, with math software to increase the automaticity of students and also with some software there that will help our children, particularly our older children who come to us to learn to speak English. We have the educational assistant ratio that is maintained as what we receive from the state. In addition, there are several schools that have an additional EA or several EAs because of the title funding. We have added three resource teacher positions this year, we have added a gifted coordinator, this is something that the board feels strongly about and I think they're absolutely accurate with that, I think that we need a coordinator that can help both our teachers to learn how to better serve our gifted and high achieving students, but also can work with those students. We have added three midday assistants to be media assistants, added a principal to start mid-year, we are opening a new school the next year and it's important to bring that principal onboard mid-year to prepare for that. And then we are adding two painters, we do have schools that are in need of paint and so it's going to be better for us to hire those additional painters than it is to be continuing to contract with them. And so at this point in time, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Anderson to go over any additional highlights that you would have, Mr. Anderson, and also any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert, board, thank you. I wanted to just point out that this budget is built on approximately a 3% student growth increase. We are looking at extra money from the state this year as a one-time expense for technology, they've put in our budget approximately 343,000. And then capital outlay that the state has not been providing over the last few years, they've added that back in at about 272,000. The budget, to balance our budget between our revenues and our expenditures, is going to require some fund balance monies and it's approximately $2 million of our existing fund balance. We expect our fund balance to come in a little bit less than 7 million by the end of this year, so we'll be having to dip into that to make sure all of our, all of our budget numbers match. Overall, our expenditure growth is calculated at 5.9% in expenditure growth and so that's, that's where we are. Dr. Gilbert went through all the other highlights that we have in the budget. A lot of the things that we looked at very seriously this year, of course, is the utilities, we've had two very mild winters and that has allowed us to build up some fund balance monies and allowed us to enter into this year with utilizing less in the budget as far as how we establish our expenditure lines, so we have taken some of that. And the fact that we did buy the buses out of fund balance monies last, last year for the buses, we would anticipate having to do that again and coming back to you sometime in January of next year to determine where we are going to be with bus ridership and the opening of our new school. But we'll have better information for you by that time. The capital outlay expenditure this year is one of the largest numbers we've ever presented to you, we have some capital outlay needs that need to be addressed in our schools and we've gone over them pretty extensively in the, in the work session, so I'll be glad to answer any of the questions that you have for me this evening. Send it to the board.
Board members, are there any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I have some.
Okay, Ms. Rainier and then Mrs. Phillips.
At this point in time, are we just talking about this budget or are we including the ESP and cafeteria budget?
Typically, we should break it down into the three different distinctions, so if we just stay on the main general purpose right now, we'll be talking-
I do have one question on the general purpose. When we discussed the new media center program, Destiny, Ballot Destiny program, and that cost for this year, and I know we've discussed this a lot and I apologize, but it dawned on me this week, or not this weekend, yesterday, does that include the startup for the new school as well when it comes online or will there be additional monies for that new school or do you know?
The, the number that we had was for 12 schools, depends on if we put it into the pre-K or not, whether we do that, if not we would of course have to buy another license for that school.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
I just want to let the public know that there have been long and lively discussions about this budget and, and that's the way it should be, a good vital discussion just, it just, it benefits everybody, the school community and the community at large. And I was going to ask Mr. Anderson, first I wanted to commend Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson because they have listened to the concerns and the suggestions of the board and have, you know, adjusted things and explained things and, and have been very, very patient with our many questions and, and concerns and they've been very responsive to the things the board have, has, have expressed to them. And I wanted to ask Mr. Anderson, just for the sake of the public at home, if you could review maybe three or four main items that you have adjusted from, in, in response to the board's discussion?
Sure. The first one, which was the biggest one over $300,000, was the request to adjust the utility expenditures. So that was, that was a big one that we adjusted downward, so and we have experienced a good, good utility expenditure reduction, so we were comfortable in doing that. The other thing was on the bus purchases, they would be over another $300,000 for three buses and we took that out because we had it in the budget to have it there so we would have the money available if we needed it. But we're not sure in January if we're going to need three buses, if the state changes the law and lets us use the buses longer mileage, then we wouldn't have to use as many, so that was another big thing. And then just looking at the overall thing, we went through line item by line item, finding pieces of the budget to take out, but those were the two major big things that we did take out of the budget.
Ms. Smith?
I want to thank you for, again, going line by line and making the changes and Dr. Gilbert changing some of your plans that you might have had and with the understanding that with the board's sentiments about, about those line items. I wanted to say that I am most enthusiastic about the new full-time gifted coordinator slot that has been allocated in this budget. Many parents know that when Discovery School was started, the gifted program was moved only to Discovery School, but that to me is, was not a great, a great move and this is a very positive move for the rest of the schoolchildren in the system. And not only can the coordinator help the teachers work with these students, but work directly with our gifted children outside of the Discovery School and then also with the teachers at the Discovery School who may or may not have had training to work with gifted children. So, thank you very much.
We feel like it's a really good time for that, we have a partnership with Vanderbilt and they have done some, some training this year and so we really feel like it's a good move for that. We obviously have gifted children all over the system and so we think that it's important for, for there to be someone to work with, the teachers of those children, but also to work with our high achieving students and particularly as we move into Common Core, that deepness of instruction that we really need, so thank you very much for your comments.
The other thing is, and as we have gone line by line, one thing that has been a very big interest to me is the capital outlay budget item for the Segal Playground. Right now, it's listed $158,000. That is at the high end and as, as Mr. Anderson has explained to me over and over again, that is, we can get bids that could even cut that into half or a third, but that is the high end, so we need to understand, understand that as we move forward with the budget.
Ms. Barrett?
Not so much questions, just some comments. Appreciate Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson working with us again, going through this budget line by line, just listen to us and we took a lot of time, a lot of meetings to get to where we're at and I feel pretty good about it. You know, we're being good stewards of the taxpayer money, but we're keeping this teacher-student ratio low and I'm, I'm glad about that. And as Dr. Gilbert stated, we're getting ready to open a new school and I had Mr. Anderson put, put some numbers together for me, just rough, they're not, you know, just preliminary, but it's going to cost us about 1.4 million just to get that online next year, so we've got to keep that in mind going forward, so just wanted the board to be aware of that and I think that was about it.
Mr. Campbell?
I think we do need to mention that we have incorporated in this budget, it's not a major raise, but it's 1 and 1/2% for teachers and all school employees as far as that goes, which matches the state and that's at about, how much, Gary, I forgot?
Look, total for the budget's a little over $600,000.
Okay. We certainly tried to look and tried to do more, but right now we just, we were not able to, but I do want our, our people to know that we're not just building buildings and buying other things, we're trying to help them out as well.
Are there any more comments or questions about the budget before we ask for a, to go, Ms. Rainier?
I don't, this is just a comment, again, for the families and the teachers watching at home, that when we talk about this 1 and 1/2%, we know that the state has graciously given 1 and 1/2%, however, that does not mean they're giving the school system 1 and 1/2% per teacher. There's a formula and I think we only receive, Mr. Anderson knows this by heart, but I think we only receive 74% of that amount. we only receive 74% of that amount. The rest is made up locally. Some of our positions are not BEP positions, so it is a big chunk from our own budget. And having been on the other side and been involved with negotiations, you know, I always knew this, and I know that teachers know this, but it's nice for it to be refreshed in their memory. We would love to be able to do more, but unfortunately, this is the best we can do this year.
Ms. Phillips?
And I want to also point out that this does include steps, step increases, which are raised, but they've been, a raise that's been negotiated long ago in addition to the 1.5%. And I just think it's important for people to know that about steps. And to touch on a point that Mr. Campbell made, which is an excellent point, about this not being just for our certified, but for our non-certified employees, this 1.5%, because I remember Mr. Pitterd. I had the honor of sitting beside Mr. Pitterd for several years before he passed, and I remember he always wanted to make sure that everyone, every employee of Murfreesboro City Schools was rewarded for their loyalty and their hard work, if at all possible. And whenever I vote on that, I always think of that legacy that he left in my mind. So just remembering Mr. Pitterd.
Okay. If no other comments or questions, Mr. Anderson will continue.
When you vote on the budget, the federal budgets are not finalized. So when you do it, what typically you would do is approve the general purpose budget and the federal budget up to the amount of revenue that we receive from those, and give the director the authority to, as, we won't know that stuff till later in the year, what it is. So what we're asking is, when you make a motion for this, is to approve the general purpose budget and to allow the superintendent to do the federal budgets up to the amount that the federal budget has provided to us for this year. And that's how we've done it in the past. Just wanted to remind everybody.
Okay.
So if we could take three votes, general purpose, then we can do food service and ESP, and three distinct votes.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and vote on the general purpose budget first. Is there a motion? And when you make the motion, Mr. Anderson said to be sure and say, we approved the general purpose budget, and also we give the director power to wait until the federal budget is up to whatever they're going to send us.
Up to the amount that the federal government provides. Yes, ma'am.
Sounds like a great motion. Is there a motion? No moves? Oh, sorry. You're fine.
Sir?
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, did you get what Mr. Anderson said a few minutes ago? Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rinear?
Aye.
Ms. Snea?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. The next budget in your book is the extended school program budget. They are asking for no additional rate increases, and it is a self-sustaining budget. Pretty much speaks for itself there. So any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of those, but there's no real changes to the overall budget structure on this one.
I move we approve the ESP budget.
Does that second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for the approval of the ESP budget. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Thank you.
Okay. The third budget is the school nutrition budget, and it also is in your book, it's in the federal section. In this budget, they are not asking for any increases. We were under the impression that the federal government is going to require a rate increase. Well, they have suspended that rule. They are putting together a new rule about that, so we do not have to go up this year on the charges, which is a blessing. We're glad we don't have to do that. This program is also self-sustaining, and so it is here for your consideration, any questions you would have about this particular program.
Ms. Rinear and then Mrs. Phillips. Mr. Barrett, you have a hand?
No.
Okay.
We know that this is self-sufficient or self-supporting, so we really don't need to do anything other than approve it or not approve it. However, I have to say that I'm receiving numerous phone calls about the breakfast in the classrooms issue, and I know that you visited in Clarksville, was it? But apparently, that's a big brouhaha right now, and I think that you were going to give us some more information?
Well, actually, let me tell you how that whole discussion came about, and then the newspaper did pick up on that, which I thought was interesting. The way I approach this budget is like I approach any budget, is that we don't know whether we're going to need two extra teachers next year, but they're there in case we need them. I had had, last year, when we started the breakfast the way we do it now, I'd had two principals that had since come to me that had said they would like to have it in their classrooms. And in fact, one of those folks had actually had, we've had breakfast in the classroom in Murfreesboro City before. We've had it at Hobgood, I think, in kindergarten, and then also we had it at Bellwood. And so I happened to be sitting at a meeting of superintendents and just asked Dr. B.J. Worthington, I said, "Do you know anybody that does breakfast in these classrooms?" And he said, "Yeah, we do it." He said, of the things, he has a mid-year review with principals, and he said, "Of the things that we talked about with the principals," that was the one thing that they really liked. And so I thought, okay. So we had three principals, two assistant principals, and a couple of central office staff that went to Clarksville, took a look at a school called Glen Allen Elementary. I have not talked with all the principals yet. That is on the agenda for tomorrow, and subsequently, we'll be doing some talking about whether we move to that. There certainly are some positives to it. I think when there's the assumption, there are a lot of assumptions, and then there's the reality once you see it. And so I think that as far as creating a climate of children learning how to eat together, for example, the manners, what I'm hearing is that it transfers the behavior in the classroom, transfers over to the lunchroom. What I'm hearing is that the discipline issues that are in the hallways that might be there in the morning are much less there. What they have told me in Clarksville is the instructional time is greater because of the way that it operates there. So as far as this district, we have not discussed procedures, we have not discussed anything. It's in the budget because if we have, and I know we do have some schools that want to move to that, if we decide to move to that, and it would be with talking with the principals and seeing what benefit it is for the children, because that's going to be the first priority, is it better for the kids? Because that's the guideline that we go on, then it would be there in the budget for us to do that. And that's the approach I'm taking, and it's the approach that I take with everything we do.
So there is an amount of money that goes along with this program, or?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Anderson and maybe to Ms. Shealy. What we heard in Clarksville is that they have, and in fact, the one school that I talked to today that had done it before, they actually still, I think, have their containers. But the way that it works in Clarksville, and the money that I'm assuming that would be there, that would be expended, would be for, there are two, in each classroom, there were two, like thermos container carts that the food was in. My understanding is, from talking to Clarksville and Ms. Shealy too, that there's even a possibility that we could get those donated to us. But I'm going to defer to Mr. Anderson about that.
Sure. There's the milk people, they're called Sudia. They provide the containers, the insulated bags for that. We built in the budget the amount to buy that in case we don't get it given to us. That's why you saw an increase in the budget. We already are participating in the universal free breakfast, which means no child pays for it. The program is funded through our federal program, our federal school nutrition program. So the only cost that we're going to have with this program is the equipment that takes it to the classroom, like the containers or whatever, the thermal containers, and maybe some trash cans or something like that. But the overall operating costs, it's not going to hurt. In fact, the way our program is established, based on the percentage of children who can get the meals through the universal free breakfast, we will come out fine financially. It's not a concern.
Well, that was what I thought, that there really, it kind of washes out, so to speak. But I think the concern of some of the employees that I've heard is that, oh, my gosh, it's going to be a mess, we're going to have to clean the room, there's going to get milk spilled in the carpeting, it's going to smell bad, it's going to take up time away from instruction, where on the other end, I'm hearing that it enhances instruction. So I think that they maybe need to hear a little more about it.
I think you're right, and we'll have those discussions. In fact, I think, well, in fact, it's on the agenda for the principal's agenda tomorrow. So what happened with that, again, is it has to be in the budget for us to even consider it, just like anything else. But the process of getting to there is not, we're not there yet.
Thank you.
The day after TCAP tests, Hobgood is going to a breakfast in the classroom because they're destroying the dining room. We will not have a dining room. So we will see how it works for the last month of school at Hobgood. So it's a good thing for us to be looking at. But because they'll have no dining room and no kitchen, we wait until after TCAP, so it wouldn't be any disruption. We will see how the program, because they're actually going to have lunch in the classroom too.
Okay. Ms. Phillips and then Ms. Smith?
Okay. I quite frankly am not in favor of that program, and all the teachers I've heard from, they have shared many concerns, which I'm just going to go ahead and share. At least one of our schools has carpeting, and kindergarten teachers, this breakfast, as I understand it, would not be served until class starts. And so instead of, you know, getting a teacher starting with their class and things getting going and instruction beginning, and instead, teachers are, especially kindergarten and first grade teachers, are spending time opening milk containers, opening the plastic thing that holds the spork, you know, the spoon fork thing, and doing this for every child because there's not aides in every classroom. And then they're trying to do all this, and there are not sinks in some of the classrooms. They don't have sinks to pour the extra drinks down, or the old milk, or the juice or whatever. And so those were some of the concerns. Other concerns that I personally have is that we talk all the time about the tremendous load on our teachers and how we hate to ask our teachers to do one more thing. Well, to me, this is that one more thing, and I am not in favor of having to ask the teachers to do this in their classroom unless it's a necessity, like we're building over at Hobgood. You know, in that case, I can understand it. Another concern I have is that we have ESP kids coming in that arrive, some of them arrive at 6:00 in the morning. Are they going to be asked to wait until, you know, 8:00 to have their breakfast? And what about the parents at home? We're taking away, you know, parents at home who choose to feed their children breakfast at home. Then their kids have to come to the classroom and sit and watch everybody else eat? We've only had universal free breakfast for one year, and I feel sure that over time, the people that participate in that will probably increase. But let's give it some time. Let's see how that works. Let's, you know, let's give it, that program, time to grow and not put another responsibility that is not dealing with instruction on our teachers. As far as, you know, manners and learning how to eat with others, kids can do that at lunchtime, you know? So I just feel like, you know, I just feel like this has real concerns for me, and I've heard from, like Ms. Rinear, many teachers about it, so.
Ms. Smith?
I'm kind of mimicking what the other, I'm also getting phone calls. I've heard from several kindergarten teachers who are very concerned about, you know, the first day of school, the first few weeks of school, having to open those containers when it's already, you know, they're very young children coming into kindergarten, and they'd have to have, you know, 10 mommies, and they're trying to help them open containers and not be able to get on with the work of the day. It does look like that the breakfast in the cafeteria seems to be very positive, and we probably need to try our programs a little longer than a year. So, but I do think that you should talk to the principals and see what they think. Of course, they're the ones in the schools, but again, I am hearing from the teachers. And one thing that one teacher said is that there are not a lot, there's so many requirements in the classroom now that there are not many socialization opportunities, and the breakfast in the cafeteria gives them that opportunity. So anyway, if you'll just take that into consideration. And it does seem that the teachers are concerned, and maybe when you talk to the principals, you can talk to them a little bit about what we're talking, what we're saying.
Right. I will. I'll share that tomorrow.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Barrett?
Well, I've gotten some phone calls too, and I've not talked to anybody that has been in favor of it, out of about 15. And some of those have been from different levels of employment, I'll say, within the school system. I did have one teacher tell me that perhaps now, as on the evaluation process, we now can also give another job description to teachers as a waitress. And I thought that was pretty, you know, that may be kind of a little bit. But I would ask you, I don't know whether the board has to, I don't guess we have to approve or disapprove, but I would ask you to look at it very seriously and closely and try to get as much input as possible. And for those of us who have received some input, perhaps we can sit down with you and give you the, both sides of the spectrum, I guess. I would, I did tell one that I'm glad the county didn't want to do it in the 31 years I was in administration, but I think it would be a massive headache.
Mr. Barrett?
Isn't there, and we mentioned this one of our meetings, isn't there an opportunity to go up and do a site visit and see how they're actually doing this, and, you know, see for ourselves if it's, you know, ask the teachers that are actually doing this now up there and ask them the principals?
And I'm certainly not going to make a move on this unless I talk with principals and teachers. I just don't operate that way, unless it's in a situation where there's an emergency.
Dr. Brown and then Ms. Phillips?
To echo Dr. Gilbert's last comment, I think as a board, we have two major constituent populations. We have the students, and we have the teachers. And I think having the input of the teachers in addition to the principals would be very important in this issue.
I agree.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Ms. Phillips?
The only thing that is that, you know, it doesn't have to, we don't have to approve it in the cafeteria budget. We can choose not to approve that in the cafeteria budget.
Comment?
Mr. Campbell?
Does the cafeteria budget have to be approved or not approved tonight?
Yes, because we have to take it to the city council for May 1st.
Ms. Rinear?
As with other of our line items in the general purpose budget, we have approved amounts larger than what we hope they'll come back as. So I don't see a problem approving this budget. It's just after some discussion with your principals and whomever that, you know, it may come back that that's not needed. So I don't have any problem approving the budget as it stands.
Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Baker, if we approve that in the budget, is that a tacit approval of the program?
Now, if you want to ask the director to bring the program back to the board for consideration, she could do that, but the key to the budget is if the principals in a majority that, you know, decide that this is a good idea and we don't have it in the budget, you don't have the funds to go and do it then, at that point.
We just have to wait another year now.
And my problem would be is if there are schools that want to do this, I would hate for them not to have the opportunity to do it, because it was brought to me by two schools.
Are there any other questions on this, Ms. Smith?
Can we have, I mean, could you have approval of the program for just two schools as a test?
I can, but I would, I have only heard from two schools. What I would like to do is go back with the principals and see where each school stands.
Have you had phone calls yourself from?
Pardon?
Do you, I mean, have you had phone calls?
No. I actually, I called, I actually talked with four principals today because it's on the agenda for tomorrow, and I wanted to hear from them.
Okay. Mr. Barrett and then Mrs. Phillips?
Ms. Smith answered my question. Maybe we can do the two schools that have requested it, and then?
Well, what I'd like to do is talk, the way, here's the way I approach this, and it's the way I approach everything. There are rare occasions when I will make a blanket decision, and if I do make that blanket decision, it's usually going to be about safety, where there's no choice, or it's going to be about legalities, or it's going to be what the state says. The way I will approach this is the way I approach everything, and that will be to talk with the principals about what they want to do. And I think that's fair, and that gives them an opportunity, and I would hope that they would be honest with me, I trust that they are, that would give them an opportunity then to say and to talk with their teachers, to look at the benefits for children, and to see what they want to do. The board can decide what the board will decide, but I would prefer to give that leeway to the principals.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Phillips?
Then I would ask that, I take Ms. Baker's suggestion and ask that you bring it to the board. Let us know.
Are there any other comments or questions concerning this budget? Does everyone have a clear understanding of what we're going to do? And Dr. Gilbert has said that she will bring it back after conferring with the principals, and I'm pretty sure from what Dr. Brown has said, they will ask, those are the ones affected are the teachers, and I'm pretty sure they'll bring it back to Dr. Gilbert, what each one of their schools want to do. So are you ready to, someone to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the cafeteria budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you. Reports, Mr. Anderson?
Can I please thank Beth Prair for all the work she did on this budget, and the department heads, and the principals?
Mr. Anderson, I also want to thank the principals and department heads for meeting with us prior to even putting the budget together about what their desires were.
That's right.
You know, all of our constituents at home are seeing Beth for the first time. Why don't you introduce Beth? So they don't know who Beth, we're saying Beth did this, they're clueless tonight. You want to introduce them and tell them a little bit?
You can blame everything on them.
Sure. Beth is the interim finance manager. She is the one who heads up the whole finance office, takes care of the day-to-day work in there. She is the one who actually structured all the budget numbers together and worked through it with her, with her staff, and she's just done a wonderful job, and we're very lucky to have her with us, and she's probably very nervous right now.
Thank you. Reports and information.
Mr. Anderson?
Okay, the first report is the district-wide construction renovation update. I was at Hobgood today at a construction meeting, and they are moving along very nicely. The new HVAC units are in the classrooms, they'll be wait to be hooked up after, after we close down for the summer, but that's ready to go, and the thing is progressing along very nicely. As I mentioned, we will be shutting down part of the building after TCAPs to feed the children in their classrooms, we have to renovate the whole kitchen and dining room area. But other than that, it's going very well, and things are on track to progress and as scheduled. Bradley elevator, there's really not much change in that. We have awarded a contract, we've had a pre-construction meeting, and everything is online for that. I even got down to the point of choosing the colors for it, so we're ready to move on that one as soon as school is out. Mitchell Nielsen Elementary gym roof, there's no change on that. It also will be constructed over the summer, and there's no change on the parking lot resurfacing for MNE, MMP, Discovery, and Bellwood. We're working with the city street department to do that. The front door entrance security locks, audio/video system, they're all hooked up, and each school is bringing them online now as we go through the, go through the installing and getting them for everyone to work. They're sending home letters to the parents so they know what to expect when they come into the schools, and we've received some good reports about them working. Also, the security about handing out badges and things are also in full swing on that.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell has questions.
You have already put that in place in some schools, am I correct?
Yes, sir. The equipment's there, actually using it is what's being phased in.
Okay, but those places where it has been phased in, what are parent responses? They like it? Like it? Principals say they like it? Good. Okay, cool. Good deal.
I have a question.
Ms. Phillips? And then Ms. Smith?
I have a question. Who chooses the colors?
Her and the principal choose the color.
Actually, there's a.
There's an interior designer with a construction company who comes and brings these palettes of different colors and different pieces. They bring it to the facility, we go and we look at them, and Dr. Gilbert and the principal are there to make a decision about the colors. I stay out of the colors.
I was just wondering if it was you, Mr. Anderson.
He tried the first time, it didn't work. Tammy and I overruled him.
What are the procedures for after-school with these cameras for security?
Security for the ESP program?
Yes.
Okay. ESP program has different entrances at some schools and the same entrances at other schools, and they are supposed to be doing the same buzz-in system when the parents come to pick the children up after school. And as they get online, you know, that's the way I understand it to function, if the principals, anyone who are currently using it could answer any different, I think that's the way it's supposed to work.
So some of the security cameras look visibly installed, but they're maybe not in use quite yet?
The cameras are installed and work, except for the ones right there at the door. They're there, they're ready to work, they're just waiting for the principals to get the word out to the parents about what to expect when they come to the door. But all the cameras work in the buildings.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is the new elementary school. We are waiting on the geothermal conductivity test, all the other tests have been done. We have appeared before the Board of Zoning Appeals and been approved, and we've also, we met after I wrote this document, we met with the Planning Commission, they have also approved the plan, so we're moving forward on that. I thought I'd add in here a little extra piece at the bottom to talk about all the extra energy efficiency things, because some of you had asked me about that. So I listed the eight main items that are in our school, the new school design for energy efficiency. And obviously, the geothermal, the energy-efficient lighting, including the gym, which is a big one. All lighting is on motion-activated sensors, so the lights will turn off if no one's moving around in the rooms. The energy recovery ventilators and the air handlers, the LED exterior lighting, two-story design which reduces the heat load from the roof surface, and an energy, an advanced energy management system for HVAC controls. So those are some of the main features to help keep this down around the same cost as what John Pitters is.
Mr. Barrett?
Glad that we're trying to do some energy efficiency at our new school. Are we doing anything with our older buildings in regards to energy efficiency to try to bring down the, you know, electricity use? I know it was a big chunk of our budget, so I was just curious as if there's anything.
Boy, I love questions like that. Thank you for asking that.
Oh. Aw. I know why, too.
Well, in our renovation at Hobgood, we put in the renovation package to put all-new variable refrigerant flow air conditioning in, and not only does it help on the utility bill, but it helps on the environment in the classroom, it helps on the noise, it helps on allergies and things like that, and the city council approved the funding for that. So that means Discovery School and Hobgood will have those old-through-the-wall units taken out and put in. Also, I have spoken with the state, and we're going to receive a grant to monitor our energy efficiency. What it is, what it does is it monitors how much energy or electricity we're using in our buildings and what's called peak demand charges, and once we find out that, then we can control behaviors, and when we turn things on, and just keep, and monitor those things. We do have plans as the state makes additional interest-free loans available, which we are very hopeful that they will, because the money that they loaned out originally is starting to flow back into the program, that we would be in line to change the HVAC at another one of our schools and upgrade that. So we are constantly looking for those type of things, so thank you for asking.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate that.
Any more questions on money saving, or Mr. Anderson? Okay.
Okay, next report is the financial report. We're at the 75% time of the year. Our net income so far is $5,387,000 plus. Last year at this time, we were at $3,263,000. So we're ahead of our pace right now, which obviously is very good for us. Revenue-wise, we're down slightly of a percentage of what we brought in, but we're up in the dollars that come in, so it's just a matter of semantics of percentages versus, but we have received more dollars, and so we're pretty comfortable with that. We are watching our property tax, obviously, everybody's heard about that, we're watching that collection rate, and we see that's about 4% behind where we were last year at this time, so that's one we're going to have to keep an eye on. On our expenditure side, we're at 68.1%. Last year at this time, we were at 73.1, so we were okay last year, but we seem to be in better position this year, so we're feeling comfortable with our finances at this point. Anyone have any questions on the finance report? Okay. The next report is the report on your attendance and enrollment. At the top of the sheet, it says, it says the seventh month, February 25th through February 22nd, that is March 22nd, sorry about that, it's a 3 instead of a 2, my bad. Overall, we're still up 79 students over the budget, and we are up 269 over what we had the first day of school this, last year, and we're 230 kids over where we ended last year, so those are also good numbers. Our pupil teacher ratio in K through 3 is at 18.97, and 4 through 6 is 20.77. And if you look at, over in the bottom left-hand quarter, our attendance percentage is at 96.2, which is excellent, excellent number. Anyone have any questions on the enrollment report and attendance? Okay, thank you. Could please my reports?
All righty. There are no questions. We're down to other business. Mr. Barrett?
I wanted to add something for the, our next policy session meeting. Multi, I went to the NSBA, National School Board Association Conference, and I saw a presentation on multi-financial planning, and I'd like for us to have a discussion at that at our next policy session meeting.
And also, if you would like, when we have our next board meeting, if you would like to talk some about your trip and the different things that.
Yeah, definitely.
Mrs. Renier?
Though it was under our consent agenda with the field trip list of fees and whatever, I just wanted to commend Irma Segal, who I think, the principal's back there, there, some of the children are going to see Bradley's production of Little Mermaid, and I think that's great to support one another, that's super. And I also wanted to wish all of our students and teachers good luck on that lovely little cat. I used to call it the Terra Nova test, so it's coming this week and next week, so good luck with that.
Is there anything else that we want to put on the other business for our policy session?
Yeah, can I make a statement on other business?
You want it added to the agenda for?
Today? It's just a compliment.
Oh, yeah. Compliment, oh.
Okay, all right. I want to compliment Ms. Newell and the people at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary. They have, yeah, I'll speak up, Robin, so you can hear me. They're taking students to land between the lakes, and a couple of weeks ago, they had some financial problems, I guess I will say, on whether or not everybody's going to have enough, they were going to have enough finance to take care of a child. I got a letter from Robin, and I took it, but anyway, that, I'm not talking about me, but I talked to her today, and the community has responded to that school extremely well, from what she told me, and I think that is a feather in the cap of not only the community, but also the students, and the teachers, and the staff, and everybody at Mitchell Nielsen on the way there, projecting themselves out into the community, and how well they're doing. So congratulations to you.
If there is nothing else, we will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved? Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn.
All right.